All right, Commissioner Brown.
Justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
So it looks like we've got a message in the chat is can everybody see like everybody can see that? Is there something that we need to do about that or? Nope, that's just the notice that we're live.
Are we recording?
Yeah, we're good, we're live, we can just roll with the meeting.
Yes, we're recording.
Okay, so it's a public hearing for a site plan review to review to consider requests asking for to place an addition on the garage located at 480 Shavner Street. The owner or applicant is Jill Christmas Carlson. Let's see, does anyone wish to object to the justification of the commission to hear this matter? Okay, does any commissioner wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this matter because of possible financial gain resulting from this application because own property within the area and list entitled to receive notice of this hearing because you have direct private interest in the proposal or because you have determined that you cannot be impartial? Okay, does any commissioner need to declare a prior contact with the applicant or any party involved in this hearing? And if so, please state with whom you had contact and what was said. If any counselor declares an ex parte communication state, the parties will have the right to rebut the substance of this communication during the testimony and hearing. Any commissioners? Okay, has any, sorry, I keep saying counselor, is any commissioner viewed property? And if so, if you have evidence that was gained from the visit that you want to state for the record? Okay, I guess we're ready for the staff report, Ryan.
As Chair Brown said, we're looking at a request to add an addition onto an existing home at 480 Shavner Street. It's a 11,000 or 1,128 square foot home with an attached 408 square foot garage. All were built in 1974. It's part of a originally was two parcels of the original Gold Hill town plat from 1884. And they're asking to place an additional 384 square foot addition to the garage. So again, the property is 0.23 acres in the R1 zone 480 Shavner Street. So when we look at what criteria have we previously adopted regarding site plan reviews, that would be in section 17.48050. And there are standards A through G. And then the base lot standards for the zone are in chapter 17.16. So in my staff report, I looked at all of those criteria and tried to evaluate if their proposal meets our previously adopted criteria. So the first standard basically does the site plan meet all of our standards. And there's, there's one tricky issue, we've dealt with this before. A lot of properties in the city of Gold Hill were built a long time ago and don't necessarily meet the current setbacks. So that's the same issue that's going on here. If you look at the proposed setbacks, it does not, let's see, it doesn't meet the setbacks on both streets. So a straight reading of the code would say that they need to adjust their site plan to meet the required 20-foot front yard setback and 10-foot exterior side yard setback. However, there's an additional section of our code, 17.44.010 that allows setback exceptions if there are dwellings on abutting lots with setbacks of less than the required depth for the district. So I looked at seven lots within one block on Shavner Street and six of them have setbacks less than 10 feet and three have no setbacks at all. And then I looked at adjacent lots on Fifth Avenue and let's see, what was there? And I think it's the same issue there. You have several properties that don't meet the current setback. So it's staff suggestion that a five-foot setback in both of those fronts would at least be some kind of a setback and it seems like this site plan can meet that. So with some conditions and a use of section 17.44.010, it seems like the base zoning standards can be met. The original application didn't include elevation drawings showing how high the addition was. They recently submitted additional drawings that show it's a 10-foot wall with a 12 over 10 roof. It's going to be approximately maybe 13 feet tall. So definitely means the height limit of 35 feet. Standard, the next standard is related to driveways or points of ingress and egress. The site currently has two driveways and they suggested condition be that if they propose any more that they get a permit from the city and build it in accordance with public work standards. They already have, the next standard is related to parking. They already with an existing garage and a driveway have enough on-street, off-street parking. They're not proposing any signs, that's the next standard. And the next standard after that standard E, consideration shall be given to the accessibility and sufficiency of firefighting facilities. And they'll have to comply with all of the requirements of the building permit that they obtained from Jackson County. So a condition suggested by staff is that they follow through with the building permit process and apply for a building permit from Jackson County Development Services and follow all conditions. And the next standard F, all improvements shall comply with architectural and design standards. Again, our suggested condition was that they submit elevation drawings they have which seem to meet the roof line and overhang standards related to residential development found in our code. And then the last suggested condition related to standard G, all improvements shall comply with all applicable city, state and federal laws and regulations. That's a suggested staff recommendation. So with five conditions, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the request. Number one, using that ability to modify the setback in 17.44.010, staff suggests that the applicant shall revise their site plan to show that the proposed garage maintains at least a five-foot front yard and a five-foot exterior side yard building setback. And two, that if any driveway alteration is proposed, the applicant will obtain an encroachment permit from the city and build the driveway in conformance with the city public work standards. Three, the applicant shall submit elevation drawings to show compliance with the building height limit of 35 feet, which they've already done. Four, the applicant shall apply for a building permit from Jackson County Development Services and comply with all associated requirements. And five, all development is subject to compliance with the Gold Hill Municipal Code as well as state and federal laws and regulations. So that's a brief explanation of the staff report and the suggestion for the planning commission. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Just so according to the drawing that was just sent out a couple of days ago, so this is going to be a single car garage? Looks like?
I think it's just an extension of their existing garage.
Because currently, because I've been by there currently that, I'm just looking at this drawing. It could be, at the current state of construction that it's in right now, that where there would, one would anticipate to be a garage door, there's siding on that front side now. I'm assuming that that's going to be cut open and a garage door is going to be put in there?
That's probably a good question for the applicant.
This one, it's, the applicant can speak to this when it's his turn, but the original garage is actually, it got converted in part of the house. So there is no garage existing, that's why he's building a garage.
Okay.
So that's really the only question I have is.
Any other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, should we have the applicant join us? Hi, Rob. Rob, you're on mute. I don't know if you know that. Can you hear us, Rob?
Uh, there we go, sorry. It muted. So I went from a half of a garage to a two-car garage. That was never, the first garage was never developed, it was developed into a two bedrooms. And so we'd left that and then with what was left, after they put the two bedrooms in the house on the concrete slab, what was I left with was about eight feet. So what I did is extend that out and make a two-car garage. And yes, the siding is still up because the city asked, you guys asked me to stop doing that. So we just haven't cut out the doors to put the garage doors in, but there will be two doors.
Oh, okay.
So you have a few more minutes if you wanted to do any other presentation. You have 15 minutes, Rob, if there's anything else you want to share or talk about?
I've also gone to Jackson County and they are in, well, I'm in the process of working backwards. There's a local engineer here in, in Gold Hill that is working with me to get a letter of compliance that I can submit to Jackson County. And then they'll give me the yellow card that I can get signed off on and kind of working backwards, I apologize for that.
It's okay.
It's kind of where I'm at right now is I'm working from backwards. As soon as I get a letter of, from the engineer signing off that we have done everything by code, which he did come over the other day and I got in compliance with a couple of things that he pointed out and then he said, yeah, that's, everything else was fine. He was worried about our setbacks. I am overjoyed to hear that, the allowance on that, because I was really worried about that 20-foot. I was like, there's no way our property line is 20 feet back. I don't know what we're going to do. So really, what you've addressed, I really appreciate your time. And that's kind of where I'm at. The city is requesting, pardon me, this, Jackson County is requesting the stamp of the city council's approval for the addition to the house. And then I can move forward from that.
And that is why you're here tonight?
Correct, correct. I know it's backwards, but I'm kind of a backwards kind of guy, apparently. More so than I thought.
Are there any questions from the commissioners to the applicant or the applicant?
I don't have any questions on the building plans itself. And I'm not sure if this is the place to address this, but it also looks like the fence line was extended along Fifth Avenue?
It wasn't. All I did is replace some of the old rotten timber posts. And I know it looks funny, I will, I promise you, I will paint that so it stains all the same color. It just looks kind of funky right now. I'm waiting for weather.
So, yeah, and given that that, I guess my question is, given that that's an existing fence, or again, a replacement, refreshing of an existing fence. The code says on a corner lot, fence height can't be higher than three and a half feet. I don't know if that is something the planning commission needs to address. Personally looking at it, if it was an existing fence, I don't think the fence, if you're driving up Fifth Avenue, I don't think the fence extends far enough to block the sight view looking to the right down Shavner.
Right.
So I wouldn't have, personally wouldn't have a problem with it, but I don't know if that's going to be an issue regarding the code.
Right, I understand.
That's what I was going to say, the whole point of that three and a half is so it, it doesn't mess the line of sight at the intersection and you can still clearly see the other street. It doesn't, it doesn't come out far enough.
Right, and also I, I didn't increase the height of the fence, of the existing fence. All I did is take the panels off and take the rotten ones out and reuse what I could and then put the new ones in there to help me out because I can't, can't find that kind of beautiful timber that was on those panels.
Sure. Yeah, aside from that, I mean, again, I don't, I don't see any issue with, with it as it exists right now as far as blocking any sight view. So that would be the only question I had.
Now, on that corner of the, where the fence ends, I will bring it down to the, to the house and make a gate there. I don't, I don't, I don't think that hurts anything there.
I wouldn't think so.
Because I just took out the shrubbery too, I, that big old bush and stuff.
Okay.
Ryan, is there anything you want to add to that or any, any suggestions you have to any of that?
I would point out a couple of things. So Gold Hill is fortunate that a lot of the original streets that are platted are very wide, but the actual pavement is in most cases quite a bit narrower. So I think there are probably a lot of fences that don't meet the code because there haven't been a vision clearance issue based on where the actual street has been paved. But it would, it would be appropriate if the council wanted to ask the property owner to correct the fence at the time of approval of any kind of a permit. But if it's not necessary, we generally don't require compliance with existing fences unless there's some kind of road improvement.
And Ryan, is, there's no, there's no impediment? There's no concern that you have though?
Anecdotally, I agree with Jessica that the actual paved road is set in from the edge of the right of way quite a bit. So I don't see a vision clearance issue right now.
I actually, I actually used to live on that corner myself, so I'm familiar with it.
Okay.
And the other point I would make is that for the applicant, the first condition of approval does require that a, a new site plan is submitted that shows and is signed by the applicant stating that the new structure will be five feet from front and side yard just.
Okay, so you just.
You calculate that it does meet a five-yard setback, five-foot setback.
Okay. So I just need to do a site plan that way on paper?
A new site plan that shows that there's at least five feet between the property line on Fifth Avenue and the property line on Shavner Street.
Understood.
Okay, I guess, is there anybody in the waiting room that wants to talk about for or against? Okay, great. Okay. Any other questions for the council, for the commissioners? And Ryan, do you have any other closing remarks you want to make?
I do not, Chair Brown.
Okay. So is there a motion that somebody would like to make to move forward?
I would like to do that. What? You didn't ask.
Commissioners, is there a commissioner that would like to make a motion?
No, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this, the proposed development based on the recommendations in the staff report.
I'll second that.
And Ryan, does your staff report actually have it laid out that the, that they're going to provide that the applicant's going to submit a new site plan?
Yes, there are five recommended conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi, Stephen, we couldn't hear you.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, it sounds like it's moving forward. I don't think we need to do a roll call, right, Jessica?
Nope, that was good.
Okay.
So thanks for your time and I will get you a copy of the staff report so that you have a list of all of the five conditions you need to meet before I will give you your stamp of approval.
Perfect, I'll see you tomorrow then. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a site plan review to consider a request asking for the city to approve a permit to build a new home on 830 Riverside Avenue. Owner and applicant, Michael Gibson. All right, so does any commissioner or, does anyone wish to object to the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any commissioner wish to make any disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this matter because of the possible financial gain resulting from this application, because you own property within the area entitled to receive notice of this hearing, because you have direct private interest in this proposal or because you have determined that you cannot be impartial? Does any commissioner need to declare a prior contact with the applicant or any party involved in this hearing? If so, please state with whom. And you had contact with him, what was said? Anybody? Okay, has any commissioner viewed the property? And if so, is there anything that you'd like to share with the other commissioners? Any evidence or information that you've been able to gain? Okay, Ryan, we're going to turn it over to you if you could give us the staff report.
Hey, so again, this is a request for a new home at 830 Riverside Avenue. It's a 0.36 acre lot, again, in the R1 zone. So we're looking at the same kinds of standards we were looking at in the previous application. The only difference is this is the whole house. It's an undeveloped lot at this time. They're seeking to place a two-story home, 2,264 square foot footprint, with 608 square feet of a second-story living space and a 1,206 square foot attached garage. So we look at those same standards, at the base lot standards, it appears their site plan meets all of the setback requirements, meets the lot coverage requirements. Again, I did not see elevation drawings, so one condition of approval would be that they turn in elevation drawings so that we can determine that the height is not over 35 feet. We look at the next standard, number of ingress and egress points. So again, Riverside Avenue on some maps is named Riverside Street. It's also in parts called Tiffany Lane. So what they're proposing for access is an existing shared driveway, which is, I think, named Tiffany Lane right there. It's partially, it's what goes back behind the grocery store. So as a condition of approval, and this is similar to a property we looked at just almost next door, they need to attach some kind of a record of an easement stating that they have a right to cross both of the property to the east and west in order to use that as an easement and access for a new home. So the condition of approval would state that they need to demonstrate an agreement that the owners of both tax, tax lots 2608, 2609 and 2611 agreed to share driveway access. It's probably already in existence, but it should be included as part of this application so that it's clear we're approving a house that has a legal access to it. Next, off-street parking requirements. It's a single-family dwelling and it's required to provide two off-street vehicle parking spaces. He's proposing a large garage and a driveway frontage that would satisfy that requirement. No signs in the next section are being proposed. Again, the next standard is related to firefighting facilities. And again, this will be reviewed by the Jackson County Building Department, which will ensure that it's built to all fires' safety standards. And we look at our architectural and design standards. And again, the condition will be that they submit elevation drawings so that staff can determine that the height and architectural standards of Gold Hill are met by the design. Again, and then there's that standard that all city, state and federal laws and regulations be complied with. So that's again, a proposed condition. So there's one issue here on the site plan at the southwest edge of the proposed home, that part of the proper, there's, so there's part of the property that's in the special flood hazard area, what's commonly called the 100-year flood zone. There's also part of the property that's in the identified floodway. So on their site plan, it shows that a portion of the home, again, in the southwest corner, is in that special flood hazard area. And there's even a small portion that's proposed in the floodway. So staff suggests two options for a condition of approval. One, the applicant would need to complete a floodplain development permit and work with me on that. And because part of the home is in the floodway, there would be some engineering reports that would have to go with the approval of such a home. They would have to do a elevation certificate and also a no-rise analysis. Those would both have to be stamped by an engineer. The other option would be that the applicant slightly alters the proposed design and removes the house or changes the design so that that southwest corner of the home is not in the floodway or the special flood hazard area. So the recommendation from staff is that the planning commission approve the request for a new home at 830 Riverside Avenue with four suggested conditions. And number four is an option for either A or B. So number one, the applicant shall submit evidence of a recorded shared access easement agreement to the city review. Number two, all development is subject to compliance with the Gold Hill Municipal Code as well as state and federal laws and regulations. Any additional development may require floodplain development permit review. Number three, the applicant shall submit elevation drawings showing compliance with the City of Gold Hill standards to be reviewed by city staff. And then number four, option A, the applicant shall complete a floodplain development permit for any portion of the home proposed in either the special flood hazard area or the floodway. Any portion of the home proposed in the special flood hazard area shall include a certificate of elevation showing compliance with section 15.12 of the City of Gold Hill Municipal Code. Any portion of the proposed home to be constructed in the identified floodway will include a no-rise analysis from a registered engineer in conformance of section 15.12 of the Gold Hill, City of Gold Hill Municipal Code. Or condition four, option B, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan showing the entire proposed structure being built outside of the special flood hazard area and the identified floodway. So that's an analysis of, of the project from the staff's point of view with four suggested conditions. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Okay, can you hear me? Did you say me?
I think Chair Brown, you're muted.
We, we can hear you, Mike, but it's not quite your turn yet, so do hang on a second.
Oh, sorry, I was talking and it was muted, so I apologize. So I was asking if there's any questions for staff from the commissioners and we'll get to you in just a minute, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, the only question I have is I, I'm looking at the application to PDF that was sent that looks like shows the site plan, but I couldn't, I couldn't really discern setbacks and those type of things from that drawing. So I just, you know, I'm assuming that any, any required setbacks are certainly going to be met.
It does identify setbacks, it's a little confusing, but there's. 10-foot on the east, 5-foot on the west. It's added in three different numbers, but 63 feet on the north and 77 feet on the south.
Okay.
So those are identified, and it does also, also show the floodway is kind of the first line that goes all the way across the site, and then just above that, and it's called Zone AE, there's a little triangle that's the 100-year floodplain, so the house, there's just a small portion of what appears to be the footprint of the house in the floodway and the 100-year flood zone. If you look at the bottom right corner of the proposed house, that area, or the bottom west, I guess, corner, that area is in Zone AE and also in Zone AE floodway.
Will the county let you build in the floodway? I didn't think they would.
Can I, can I comment on there?
Um, Mike, not, Mike, not yet, we'll definitely give you some time, sorry.
Alright.
The county-
We're just asking questions of staff right now, but we'll definitely turn it over to you in just a minute.
Yeah, it could save you all the trouble right now.
So I guess we'll get to that, but quickly, it's- The county will let you, so the county leaves floodplain development up to the individual cities, and so does FEMA. So the City of Gold Hill does have a floodplain ordinance in Chapter 14.12, and some cities allow development in the floodway with a no-rise analysis, that's an engineered report that says when a flood happens, this will not cause any increase in the flood in this particular transect of the river. I don't know if they could get that, but if they could, this could be approved and insured. And maybe we won't need to deal with that if the applicant has a different answer for us.
Any other questions?
Well, I just, what's the area where all the, kind of the grayed out, grayed area with the dots? Is that, is there any significance to that area?
I think, I think that might be the 500-year flood, which we don't have any specific requirements of.
Okay.
Okay, if there's not any other questions for, for Ryan, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant, and you have 15 minutes to do a presentation.
Okay. So Norman Frye, he's the engineer that I hired, well, architect, I guess you would call him, that did all my site plans and building plans for the house. He's, what we did, we hired a architect to do topography when we had the land surveyed, and the actual map that you guys look at, it's a little off on the 100-year flood, flood, flood zone or floodplain or whatever it's called. So after we had done that, we got the exact specifications on the lot of where that was. We make sure, we made sure that we designed the house outside of that, and I have all the, all the plans here, and I'll be able to submit that to you guys, so we're not gonna have to worry about any of that special engineering or anything, or being in those zones where it will require any extra permits or anything like that. We made sure to, to do, I made sure to do the topography on the land to find that, exactly where that line was, because again, it wasn't correct on the map that I'm sure you guys, the first map that we pulled up. It wasn't accurate. And, yeah, I mean, a- and as far as the elevation, yeah, I have, I have everything in the plans. Norm, he's really, he's really good, he's designed 100 houses here in the valley, and he did look over all the rules and regulations pretty clearly, he's really good, so I'm sure all that's gonna be fine. I think, um, I'm not sure where else trying to find it, but I'm almost 100% that I'm meeting the requirement, staying under the 35-foot elevation for the property as well.
Do you have a drawing of the house you could just hold up to the camera?
Um, I have a whole packet right here, I'm not sure which ones that you'd wanna see. The one with the elevation, I imagine.
Yeah. Nice to kind of get an idea what the house looks like, just.
Yeah. There we go, this one says elevation plan on it. So. Let me see, can I flip this around or no? Let me see. This is the first time I use Zoom, so, oh, there it is, okay. So. Elevation. Let me see.
Yeah.
This is what the house actually looks like.
Okay, you gotta turn, you turn vertically for us.
You want it like this?
There we go.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Like this? Let me turn the plans around, I can't go over there.
That's after the flood, you know.
Okay, so this would be the front.
Okay.
I think that's actually, no, that's actually the, the side that faces the river, I believe.
Okay.
This is the all the specifications on the actual build. Might be a little small for you.
Now, that's really helpful, just 'cause, 'cause I couldn't tell anything from what you submitted, but this, this looks like a real house, so.
Yeah, I mean, he's, like I said, he's designed a lot of them, he's lived here his whole life, and he does it as a hobby, he's a really nice guy, and he was really detailed with everything, I mean, every single part of this is, has been gone through and with a lot of love and care and time, so.
Is there a reason why you didn't submit more details?
I just thought we didn't need them yet.
Yeah, okay.
I thought we weren't there yet, I wasn't sure, this is the first house I'm building, so I'm, I'm very, just, you know, I'm a rookie at this, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when I did send you, I actually converted to PDFs, he just sent me like pictures from his phone of the documents, and I turned them into PDFs, so pretty low quality.
Oh, this, this helps, though.
Um, yeah, the point surveying, did my survey, and it, it was about $1,800, it was so expensive because of the topography that we needed to get done to avoid that, that 100-year flood area and, and the way, so I was, we were sure to make sure we were out of it, we actually have backup plans just in case. But, yeah, we made sure that we were within the, the area where we weren't gonna, you know, invade those areas with the more restrictions and permits and so what.
Alright. Commissioners, we have any other questions for the applicant?
I think it was 31 feet was the height, too, I can't confirm that right at the moment, but I thought it was 31 feet.
I, I, the only question I have, this might be for Ryan, does, is the county the one that would then verify it's outside the floodplain upon plans submitted by the applicant?
I would verify that, so I, if counsel was, was satisfied with the conditions, if he has information in his full report that can show that it is outside of the floodway or the special hazard area, we don't need a floodplain development permit. But if he can't, he would, so I think planning commission could approve it with the options listed as conditions, and and I would work with him and potentially his designer and surveyor to confirm that it is outside of the special flood hazard area.
Okay.
I've actually used to the point to survey my own property, so I have faith in what they found.
Yeah. Small town, I figured you guys would have heard of them. I tried to keep everything local as I could.
Any, is there anybody in the lobby that has something to say for or against the applicant?
There is not.
Okay. So, if there's no other questions for the applicant, it would, is there any more discussion that the council, the commissioners need to have with each other over this, is there, is open to discussion? Any thoughts?
My only comment is, I mean, I mean, I think this is a good project, and I, I'm happy with it, but I wish, I guess I, I wish we, we could get more information upfront, because it, I mean, seeing the drawings made it all real, so I don't care, that's.
If that makes sense, in the future, I can require site plans as part of the application, the complete set of site plans.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that might be helpful, probably in the future. I know, you know, we're just, we're just kind of in the process of getting things rolling here, so. Once we kind of develop some SOPs here, so.
The easement. Um, there was one thing about the easement. Did you guys see the, did you guys see the easement on the map that was already there? Okay.
Yeah.
It's shown on a map, but if it's actually an easement, if you do a deed search on the property, it will be recorded with the county, and if it's not, then you need to get the neighboring property owners to agree to an easement and get that recorded. That way, there's actually legal access, so your map shows it, but unless it's actually recorded in writing as an easement tied to the property, it's not yet, not yet a legal access.
So the house next to mine here, that was the only house that had property over here where you come down next to Rays, that was the only house with actually property right there, and there's just an asphalt road that's already, I don't know if you guys have been there, but there's an asphalt road already paved in.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, we had a similar case about two properties to the east, and he identified and found the recorded easement that already existed, and so you might already, you might find that it's already been done and it's recorded with the county.
Okay, um, is that something that typically- Okay.
Sorry, at the end of this, we're gonna provide you with a list of everything that we're talking about, so you'll have a clearly written paper on what you need to do.
Okay.
Any other, among the commissioners? Sorry, Jessica, what?
I said, that is, if the commission approves it, of course. I'm jumping ahead.
So it sounds like we're ready to move forward, is there any motion that, that you'd like to make?
I'll make a motion to accept the the application, the conditions listed, especially with the flood, just the approval of the floodplain part, is that? That's what, anyway, I'd like-
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Raise, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's like it's moving forward.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Look a nice house.
Looks like a nice place.
Welcome to the event. Yeah.
Now the, now the real work begins.
Yeah.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, I live, we live on a driveway with a shared easement, so those are pretty important. If you don't have one, that's a problem.
Oh my goodness, I can't even imagine how you'd get up to your house.
Yeah, no, that'd, that'd be a problem.
Sorry about that. Sorry about-
Oh, I have, before we adjourn, I wanna show you guys something.
Oh my god.
We meet person again.
Amazing, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Awesome, thank you, Jessica, that's very nice of you to do that. So now, we don't have desks, I have to figure out how to hover them right in, right in front of the camera. That's nice of you to have done that. Okay, so if there's nothing else to talk about, I think that we are going to adjourn?
Um, yeah, I just, there's, far, I don't have anybody lined up in the queue, when I get any applications, I'll let you know and I'll schedule the next meeting, but right now, I don't know when that'll be, because there's nothing out there.
One thing that, just to, to think about, you know, on that application for the, to vacate that property on, on the riverfront, you know, one thing that occurred to me as a, as what we are, as a, a way of approaching that property would be to to separate the, the house lot from the, the road, and from that, from basically what's supposed to be a little park there.
Steve, the, the applicant, I believe, is gonna appear at the next scheduled meeting, but at this point, we can't really talk about it, because we didn't notice the public, so, sorry. Keep your thoughts to yourself.
So, do we have, we have a next, we have a meeting in two weeks, is that, we had that scheduled two weeks ago originally, and I, are we gonna continue there, or? We had talked about it anyway.
That's what we can do, I, I can, I'll reach out to the applicant, and if he is ready to talk to you about that on that originally scheduled date, which I think was the 23rd, then I will let you all know and I'll resume the meeting, but if he's still not ready, then I'll push it out until
Okay.
the next meeting.
Okay.
So I'll let you know what I hear from him.
Awesome, thank you.
I would just add a little bit that it's similar to a land use decision, but it's really a request to vacate public right-of-way. So if neighbors or other people in the city approach you and wanna talk about it, it's more, it's appropriate to discuss something like giving up city property. It's not a request from somebody regarding their own private property. So it's really not something that follows the land use law. It's really something that's a city action related to property that's communally owned by the whole city. So if, you know, if Stephen is talking to somebody about that, it's not the same thing as talking about somebody who wants to build their house and going and looking and investigating, that's something that you need to do in a public meeting. But if you're discussing like changing the code that applies to everybody, you can talk to other people about it, or if you're talking about doing something with the city park or doing something with the wastewater plant, those kinds of things are not really land use law specific, so it's okay to talk about them, they're more of a legislative type action, if that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, and Mark, Mark and Stephen, I would recommend that you, you, you walk that property and maybe even get a chance to, if it's okay, Ryan, it sounds like it is okay to talk to the applicant, because I did that this last weekend, and I learned a lot and kind of looked at what, it's, it's different when you're like seeing what that might look like, you know, when you're actually there, so I would recommend, that would be really helpful, I think, in the discussion we're gonna have in a couple of weeks.
Because it, but it's also something like for the Parks Department, it's, that's in, because that's, it falls under the city parks, at least from there.
Jessica is right, in, in the sense that it's a decision of a public body, so if you are gonna talk about it as a group or a quorum, then it needs to be at a public meeting. But if you're talking about it individually with people, that's okay, so it's a little bit tricky. So it's a decision that ultimately you're going to make regarding a public decision, so.
Well, we're gonna be, we're not making a decision, we're making a recommendation, right, Ryan? Because it's the council that would have to make-
Correct. But you're, you're still, your recommendation is a decision of the planning commission, so any discussion you have amongst the planning commission needs to be done in a public meeting. But on your own, if you go look at the site or talk to the property owner, this isn't a land use decision, it's just a city decision, so it's complicated, but.
No, I think that makes sense, that makes sense. So we can't talk about it right now, because it hasn't been noticed.
Right.
And we can't talk about it as a group, because that needs to be, that needs to be publicly noticed and needs to hear us having those conversations, but if we individually wanna investigate and get a little bit more knowledge, or citizens wanna contact us directly, then that's perfectly okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then I guess, I guess it's muted now on the subject, as far as we're concerned, and, but I do recommend that you go check out the property, it was very
Okay.
eye-opening. Alright. Alright.
Before we cut off, this is not related to Planning Commission. Jessica, Budget Committee, quick question. Are, is there gonna be a Budget Committee meeting at some point or?
Yes, I'll email you a copy of the budget calendar.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna start it up next month.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned, I guess?
Thank you.